All right, we want to call this meeting to order. The regularly scheduled board meeting for the Edgewell County Board of Education for August the 4th. We want to welcome those of you that are in here with us and those of you that are joining us online for our our regular scheduled meeting. Before we get started, I want to lead us in a word of prayer before we jump into our meeting. I do want to send condolences to Matt Butler and his family, a former board member of ours. His mother has passed away. So if you'd remember the Butler family, I'm sure they would appreciate that. So let's pray before we begin our meeting, please. Father God, Lord, we thank you for this day and for the ability to gather together, God, as a Board of Education. Father, Lord, during the times that we're in, Father, Lord, we just pray for your guidance. And Lord, we just ask that you be with every decision that's made. Father God, Lord, we pray for those that are involved in the day-to-day decisions, Father God, and then as the Board makes our decisions tonight, God. Lord, we just pray that you be with us, protect us all, Father, as we get back to school. Lord, we pray that you be with all the students and faculties, everyone that has anything to do with our system, God. Lord, we just thank you for them, and we know that you are protecting us. And Lord, we just thank you for providing the means for us to be able to do that, Father. Lord God, we just pray that you be with us during this meeting tonight, God. Lord, we just honor you and praise you and give you the glory, Father. In the Holy Name we pray, amen. Well, all right, we are actually all present tonight. So when we vote, we do not have to do a roll call vote, but we will announce for those that are joining online, whether it is unanimous or how the vote goes. So those of you that are joining us online and can't really see, we'll be sure to say that. But we will be voting as we did before the pandemic on our items tonight. So we'll do that. Well, at this time, I think we're ready to turn the meeting over to Dr. Cosby.
Thank you, Mr. Womack, I appreciate that. And also welcome Mr. Tim Ramsey here to the meeting. Just already talked to him earlier today. He didn't tell me he was coming. So I appreciate Commissioner Ramsey and what he does along with our entire county commission. Agenda item A is our financial report. I want to recognize Ms. Bishop, and then I will ask for your approval of the financial report.
This month, for the month of June, our end reserve fund balance was 2.2 months. Last year at the same time, it was 2.24 months. So we're running wrong with what we were last year. Without ANT this year, it's 2.12 months. Last year it was 2.19. So we're maintaining our position right now. Our sweep account, we've actually pulled our money out of the sweep account. It only earned $88 this month. So we pulled it out because how far the rates have dropped. And then as soon as the rates recover, we'll go back into it. Our mileage, we're down $3,300 from the same point last year. So we're running neck and neck with where we were at July 31st of 2019. Our sales tax were down about $12,485. So I don't feel like that's bad at all considering the pandemic and everything that's been going on. And this is interesting because our alcohol beverage tax. So our alcohol price covered our sales tax difference.
Above that, I don't.
Nobody said something like that.
Before you approve the financial, I would like to mention, she mentioned our ANT money, which is our advancement and technology monies. We got half of that appropriated by the legislature this time. Now, the other half will hopefully be appropriated sometime in the future. But we used the monies last year to put air conditioners in all of our elementary and middle school gymnasiums. But that work is complete or very near to complete on that. So since we only got half of that money this time, I think we're going to need to have a conversation as a Board and as a group, that we want to proceed with air conditioning, our high school gyms? Or do we want to proceed with our cameras that I've talked with a few of you about? Now, we eventually can do both, but since we have about $2.1 million, we can't do both at one time. So we just need to figure out which one we want to proceed with first and which one we want to finish first. And our ANT budget is due August 15th, I believe. And so we can have another meeting prior to then to appropriate that. But we just need to, like I say, we should get all of that, but it's just, at this point, we're going to have to just, you know, see what comes first. And we've also got some, what else we have in that fund account? SROs, I believe, is part of that as well. And we're carrying about $233,000 a year in school resource officers. And the sheriff and I had a conversation about that today. So we'll bring that up, I guess, at a future meeting about how we want to proceed based on that.
Do we have the money for air conditioning the gyms? Is that money going to cover the gyms?
It should be, it won't leave us any extra. It should be, that $2.1 million will be all of it, possibly a little bit short. But that would, depending on, that's what Mr. McKee is.
That is if we get all of it.
As if we get all of it. Well, no, this first installment, it would eat up all the first installment. We should get over $4 million once we get both installments. So we can do both, but it's just a matter of what, you know, what we want to do first with this first installment of it. And like I said, the legislature's got to appropriate the rest of it, and they've not done that yet. And that could be next session, I don't know. So anyway, I'll ask, we'll have a discussion about that at some point, then we can, but right now, ask for your approval of the financials.
Will we get the rest of it before February or March?
Well, if the legislature's possibility, they could have a special session. It might be appropriated then, but there's, the governor has not called one yet. But otherwise, it will have to, you know, we'll have to wait on that. So we do, but we do have about $2.1 million to decide which direction we want to go on that in the meantime.
Please approve.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Sheridan has made the motion, and Mr. Hansman has seconded the motion. All in favor of approving the financial report as given, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Next, I'll ask you to approve our minutes for the June 30th meeting, the July 7th meeting, and the July 21st meeting as a whole, please.
Who will report?
Second.
All right, Mr. Golden has made that motion, and Ms. Farley has seconded that motion. If there's no discussion, all in favor of approving the minutes for June 30th, July 7th, and June 21st, say aye. Any opposed? Motion is unanimous.
Thank you. Next, we'll have our presentation of our audit report by the Examiners of Public Accounts. Brianna Upchurch is the one to join us. And Brianna, we will get you, we're going to get you on the screen here so everybody can see you. She's joining us virtually. So there you are, and Stacy can get some, we'll get your audio up there. And Brianna, I'll tell you when we're ready to go.
Okay.
No, well, yes, I am. Let me mute mine.
Are you guys ready?
Brianna, we're ready.
Okay, all right, thanks. Okay, in accordance with the provisions of Act 2006, 196, Acts of Alabama, commonly referred to as the School Fiscal Accountability Act, I'm here to present our audit report on the Edgewell County Board of Education covering the period from October 1st, 2018 through September 30th, 2019. The audit was released to the public on July 17th, 2020, on our website, which is wwwexaminers.alabama.gov. We conducted our audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards and government auditing standards for the purpose of rendering an opinion on the financial statements and to determine whether the Board complied with applicable laws and regulations. We also conducted an audit of the Board's federal financial assistance programs in accordance with the provisions of Title II U.S. Code of Federal Regulations, Part 200 Uniform Administrative Requirements, Cost Principles, and Audit Requirements for Federal Awards, also known as the Uniform Guide. We issued an unmodified opinion on the Board's financial statements as of and for the period ending September 30th, 2019. This means that the financial statements are presented fairly in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. We also noted no matters to indicate that the Board had not complied in all material respects with applicable laws and regulations. In addition, we issued an unmodified opinion on the Board's major federal financial assistance programs. The Board's major federal financial assistance programs were the child nutrition cluster and the special education cluster. Thank you so much for allowing me to present this report.
Thank you, Brianna. Anybody have any questions concerning our audit? Okay, well, if not, Brianna, we appreciate y'all's work on this. And I'm sure y'all will be starting again very soon with next year's audit. But appreciate y'all've done. And I want to publicly say thank you to everybody in our office. Susan led that charge along with everybody in here and did great work on that. So thank y'all for what you're doing for them. So thanks, Brianna.
Thank you.
Okay, we will go to agenda item D. And I'd ask you to approve a memorandum of understanding with Shepherd's Cove. We rely on them for pre-counseling services amongst various other items. And Ms. Cook works with them. And Ms. Cook, if anything you want to add to that, that they do, it's a very, it's a great service that we have.
Typically work with just our west end, sort of this area. But if we ask, they really work for her. So I appreciate.
Yeah, and they're based in Marshall County is why they work typically more on that end of the county. But I'd ask you to approve our MOU with Shepherd's Cove, please.
All right, we have a motion from Mr. Golden. We have a second from Mr. Hansman. Is there any discussion about the memorandum of understanding with Shepherd's Cove? If not, all in favor of approving this memorandum, say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Item A, I'd ask you to approve our salary schedule for the upcoming school year, please. And have any questions about that, Ms. Bishop? Probably glad to answer those.
All right, we have a motion to approve the salary schedule, item E, from Mr. Sheridan. And Mr. Payne has seconded that motion. Is there any discussion or questions at this time? If not, all in favor of approving the salary schedule as was submitted to us, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Item F, we have a recommendation to approve that all our child nutrition workers be moved to seven-hour employees. This will make us uniform system-wide. And unless, Ms. Parker and I have talked about that several times, or anything you'd like to add to that? Okay, so I asked for your approval to move those employees all to seven hours.
All right, Mr. Hansman has made the motion to approve moving all of our child nutrition workers to seven-hour employees, and it's been seconded by Mr. Sheridan. Is there any discussion or questions for Ms. Parker? If not, all in favor of approving item F, would you say aye? Anyone opposed? Motion is unanimous.
Okay, thank you. Item G, I ask you to approve a contract for speech pathology services. This is through the Learning Center and through some of our related services that we offer our students. Ask you to approve that contract, please.
All right, for item G, Mr. Payne has made a motion to approve the contract for speech pathologist services. And Ms. Farley has seconded the motion. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor of approving item G, say aye. Is there anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Item H, I'd ask you to approve a membership with the annual membership with the School Superintendents of Alabama. That's not only for myself, but it's also for several of our central office people as well. And ask you to approve that, please.
All right, we have a motion to approve item H. Mr. Golden has made that motion. I think Mr. Langdale and Mr. Sheridan have seconded that motion. Is there any discussion on item H, our membership with the School Superintendents of Alabama?
Yes, I've got to change that. Ms. Cross listed on there, so I will, before we send it in, I will make an adjustment on that. So thank you.
Questions or discussions? If not, all in favor of approving item H, say aye. Is there anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Item I, I've asked that we approve our Alabama Association of School Board yearly dues, please.
All right, for item I, Mr. Langdale has made the motion to approve, and Mr. Golden has seconded that motion. Are there any questions that item I, our AASB dues? If not, all in favor of approving, say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Item J, it asks that you approve our student and parent information guide and our student conduct for the upcoming year. We had very minimal changes in that. I think mostly just involved some of our administrative changes. Ms. Cook worked on that. Any other thing I've missed on that, Ms. Cook? Okay, all right. So almost the same as last year. Ask for your approval of that, please.
All right, Mr. Hansman has made the motion to approve item J, our student parent information guide and student conduct. Mr. Langdale has seconded that motion. Any questions for item J? If not, all in favor of approving item J, say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion is unanimous.
Thank you. Item K, it asks that you consider a policy and then also waive the first, waive the reading, please, so that we don't have to come back at a future meeting. But it's the newly mandated anal lens law, which is part of the Alabama Legislature. It deals with juvenile sex offenders in our schools, and it is a policy that we must have in place. And I'll get Ms. Cook one more time. I'm going to leave you alone here in a minute. She's worked on that for us. Okay. And I would ask that you, you know, waive the readings on that, and we go ahead and put that in our policy so we're ready for the upcoming school year, please, as it is required by the Alabama Legislature.
Do we need to vote to waive that or approve it straight up?
Just combine it.
Just combine it. We'll do it.
Okay, do we have a motion to waive the reading for anal lens law? And go ahead and approve that tonight? All right, Mr. Hansman has made the motion to waive the reading of the policy and go ahead and prove it for tonight. Mr. Sheridan has seconded that motion. All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to give you a reopening plan update and just ask for your approval of the overall plan and then our things we have changed. Obviously, things are very fluid and change every single day with our reopening plan and the plan in general. One thing I'd like the Board to approve, you approved a altered calendar at the last meeting, but we would like to do a staggered start at the school year, beginning with teacher, or excuse me, teacher will begin this Thursday, but beginning with students on Monday, August 17th. Students' last names beginning A through K will come, actually, I reported that the wrong way. It is listed here the wrong way on this document. So it should be A through M, and I'm going to make this, we need to make this change in our document. A through M and N through Z. A through M will be Mondays students. N through Z will be Tuesdays students. Wednesday, A through M, last name. Thursday, again, N through Z. And so if we can do that, that will roughly make us half capacity, those four days, with everyone coming on that Friday, the 21st. Now, I would like to say this, I would like to have flexibility with the Board, depending on how things go those first four days, to extend that into possibly even the next week. We'll just make an evaluation as we go and possibly, you know, we will extend that possibly for the first two weeks of school. But I want to get a read for the first few days. We have about 20% of our students have chosen virtual at this point, which is about 1,600 of our students. So this will give our teachers, our administrators, et cetera, time to just sort of get a feel for how things are going to go. And again, I want to do this the first week with the option of possibly even doing it the second week. And because I think we all have to be very flexible. So I would like to do that as part of our plan, and I apologize if my letters were not correct on there. The school procedures, a couple of things. We're going to go with the governor's mask mandate, which is second grade and above for everyone. And it's very well spelled out there. But also students that are below the second grade, we're going to encourage them to wear a face covering more practical and feasible. And so we will strongly encourage that. So I want that as part of our plan for those that are below the second grade and are not technically under that mask mandate. And then, secondly, or thirdly, rather, Chromebooks, and I'll get into Chromebooks here in a second. We, they'll receive a Chromebook if they request one until we get our 4,000 in. So we'll just change some terminology on that. And I do want to thank Ms. Howell and Ms. Scott for their hard work on, you know, putting some of these changes together in here. But the important dates on here, our in-service dates will begin this Thursday, go for seven consecutive days, and then we'll start school on the 17th. We have those PD dates. Also on our calendar, we've added, and we did this last meeting, four e-learning days, October 13th, November 23rd, December 21st, February 15th. Now, our employees still must work 187 contract days. And so we will, we will probably have to finalize some of those days because I don't have these totally finalized on here, but still, everyone must work 187 contract days. We do have the option with the state to not go to school on each of these four days if we get 1,080 hours of instructional time in. And that waiver was sent to the State Department the other day. But we, right now, we're planning on going 180 with the e-learning days. But the possibility exists, we might not have to. But once again, our employees will still have to work that, those contract days. And Stacy and I have talked about that. I'd make sure that we counted right on those. And thanks, thanks to Stacy, we did. So anyway, hopefully, they're still counted right. They are, and they're coming tomorrow for some training. And what I've told the administrators to do on that is it's two hours tomorrow afternoon. We're going to offer them CEU credits for one thing. But then also, since they're going to give two hours of that time, that one of these in-service days, we can let them go early, whatever they need. We're going to work, be very flexible with our folks because we couldn't get that training date on a contracted day. So I want to, I've encouraged everybody to just be flexible as we move here. So that's the updates that we have. There's graduation dates on here, but we'll work those out later. We're not to graduation just yet, so we'll work those out. But that's the updates I've got with our calendar. But I'll go back to stagger start. I do want to say those first four days, I think it's important that we stagger those days just to limit our numbers, but also have that option to possibly take that into the second week, just depending on a variety of factors. So have any questions? Be glad to try to answer anything.
What factors may be perceived maybe causing it to go on a staggered?
I think it could, if we come back and our plan is not working as fluidly as I'd like for it to, we might stagger a few more days. If our number of cases just all of a sudden skyrocket, that might be another factor. If we have, just, I'm going to say, I'm not going to put one single metric on that. There's going to be a variety of metrics that are out there. I know we had a webinar with ADPH today. There's not one single metric that they have. So just, I just want to get a good look, a good feel for how things are going. We might be totally in school that Friday, but here again, we may not either. So I just, I want to give our people time to adjust. That probably doesn't answer the question, but that's as best we can do. But I would ask that, if you don't have any more questions, to approve our reopening plan and then also, you know, the adjustments that we've made to it there.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the reopening plan update with the staggered beginning and the other items that we've covered? All right, Mr. Sheridan has made the motion to approve, and Mr. Golden has seconded the motion. All in favor of approving item L, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion is unanimous.
I'll say this, I appreciate a variety of central office people who are in here. They have worked tirelessly on getting this like it needs to be. Our principals are working in schools, our teachers are putting it in place. And so this reopening plan is by no means perfect, but I think it's as good as we can do with a very fluid situation, a variety of thoughts, you know, whether we should or should not open. And I respect all of those, but I know one thing, kids need to be in school, if they can be in school, in a safe manner. And we want to try to do that, and hopefully we can do that. But we got a variety of factors, so thank you for approving that. Next, item M, I want to recommend cancellation of purchase order. And you see that there, Trinity 3 for 4,000 Chromebooks due to the delay in shipment. Read any newspaper and you'll see this story. I've gotten about six or seven media calls in the last two days on this. And I will be very transparent what's happened. We ordered 4,000 Chromebooks on June the 10th with an anticipated delivery date of this week. We were notified last week that the United States Department of Commerce along with Customs and Border Patrol had held the Chromebooks up due to an issue with forced labor and other human rights violations in China. So I immediately reached out to Senator Jones's office, Senator Shelby's office, and actually communicated back and forth, talked with someone at Senator Jones's office, emailed someone at Senator Shelby's office. And actually Congressman Adherold texted, and me and I both spoke, we spoke personally on Friday. So they were very helpful, all their offices, in understanding our issue. Well, turns out our issue was bigger than just us. It involves over 33,000, at least 33,000 Chromebooks statewide and many more nationally that are held up by one of 11 Chinese vendors that was designated on the federal register the other day is having human rights violations. So our Chromebooks are made, we just cannot get them. They are stuck in customs. So we made the decision, Ms. Gray and I, on Friday, we worked through several vendors. We found another vendor that has got 198,000 Chromebooks that have been shipped that will be available hopefully this week. And we're on down the list because a lot of those were already spoken for, but we were able to order 4,000 more. These, the price difference here is, and I will get in this next item, they were dealing with cases. These first ones we bought did not have cases, and so these will have protective cases on them. So the price will be a little bit more, but it will reflect those protective cases. These include a, so let me get into that for you. Let me cancel this first order, then I'm going to get in the second one. So I'm talking too fast there. But that's in a nutshell what happened to our Chromebooks. It's, you know, very unfortunate, especially with everything else going on. But I assure you, we've done all that we can do to mitigate this as best we can. So I'd ask, first of all, you'd cancel that purchase order, please.
All right, Mr. Hansman has made the motion to cancel this purchase order, and Mr. Payne has seconded the motion. Any discussion on item M? If not, all in favor of canceling this purchase order, say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion is unanimous.
Okay, thank you. Now let's go back to the purchase here. Okay. We purchased from Trox CDI Technologies. This is a company that actually merged. They were based in, well, in Toronto, I talked to one there the other day, and in Phoenix. They're a huge vendor, keeps Chromebooks, they keep Chromebooks on the shelf, basically, is what they do. This is to purchase 4,000 Chromebooks. They are HP devices. The other ones are Lenovo devices. These will be HP, they will, you know, work with what we have. We're told that the delivery on these could start happening as soon as the last week of August, but certainly no later than the middle of September. They won't put it in writing, they tend to assure us it will be before then. Like I said, they're getting 198,000, we've spoken for 4,000 of those. And so we were able to work that out. And I want to thank Ms. Gray for working all day Friday on getting this, getting this done with these vendors. And so I'd ask that you approve the purchase of these Chromebooks, and we will get them just as soon as we can.
All right, Mr. Golden.
Where are they coming from?
These will be coming, these will be from China as well, however, they're already in the United States. And so these did pass customs. So they will, we're told there were 198,000 that they have access to. Ms. Gray, would you like to?
The original ones we had that were canceled were Lenovo. And from what I understand, Lenovo uses this Chinese company for manufacturing. So as soon as they found out what the Department of Commerce had done, they backed out completely and started notifying all the vendors. and started notifying all the vendors that we all use, Lenovo's on, they're, it's not coming. You know, they said it could be up until Christmas, maybe even after the first of the year, is what we're hearing. The HPs, the Dales, some of the other brands you can get on a Chromebook, those have made it through customs. It wasn't necessarily just, you know, they are products that they'd already come through, those were allowed to come through. So every school district is jumping to HP or Dales. And, and it was because we actually helped make this connection on these HPs. Atala had kind of given us a heads up, hey, they have these. So we made a call and I reached out to every vendor we had, and they were like, we can't get our hands on anything. But this, this company happens to have them, like you say, coming in, so we got them last. But that's kind of the deal. There, there are a few HPs and Apple products that were involved with this with Lenovo, but not as much as Lenovo, let's say.
I know of at least five or six school systems in Alabama that have been adversely affected by this because I've spoken with school superintendents of Alabama and they were, actually reached out yesterday about, you know, about the issue. So.
All right, we have a motion from Mr. Golden, and we have a second from Ms. Farley. Are there any more questions or discussion on this item? If not, all in favor of purchasing the Chromebooks from Trox CDI Technologies, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion is unanimous.
Thank you. Now, next step is pray they come in because we got to start school. Yeah, so, but thank you for doing that. Item O, ask for your approval of purchase of Schools PLP Learning Management System. Let me explain this a little bit. Schools PLP is the online virtual curriculum that the State Department of Education has purchased and has bought for all of us to use with our virtual students. And we also want our regular classroom teachers to start incorporating this as well. So we're going to, so it's going to be something we can use across the board. Learning management system on this was Schoology. Schoology is a power school product, which will be our, our software next year that we use for our, our, our student information system. But so Schoology is already there. So Schoology and Schools PLP were supposed to work together. Started talking with other superintendents and systems and it wasn't going to work quite so well, or at least I was very apprehensive that it was going to work so well together. So reached out and looked at some, what some other school systems were doing. I talked with other superintendents, and we reached out to Schools PLP and just decided with our CARES Act money for one year to buy the learning management system offered by Schools PLP. So we have the same online vendor, we have the same learning management vendor. And so those two should work well together for our students learning virtually, and then also for our classroom teachers that, that use that as part of our curriculum. And so I've talked with several superintendents that are, that are using this, and we've got training on this tomorrow, should you approve it for two hours? And we will have hiccups, we will have some bumps in the road, I'm sure, but I, but I did not want to take a chance that Schoology would not work with this particular, with this particular software. And so Ms. Gray, again, has worked tirelessly on that. Anything you want to add to that, or Ms. Howell, or Ms. Scott, y'all have all worked up with this?
Well, as we speak, we're importing from IML into schools, IML into Schools PLP to upload all the teacher courses with their students. So they will all be in there, hopefully by tonight, and everybody can get logged in. The issue is that every, or I won't say everybody, a whole lot of school systems are jumping ship and going just to Schools PLP. So I think Schools PLP is very overwhelmed and all of us coming. So they did set up our training for teachers for tomorrow, and I grabbed what I could because they were, I was told they were going to be several weeks out. So she happened to have that date, so I said we'll take it.
And we took it, and at one point, we took a date, this non-contract date for our teachers, what I hated to do, but I did not want to wait till next week and take a date closer to when school started. I just want to go ahead and get everybody as trained as we could, as early as we could, to give them time to, time to adjust. And we'll, we'll compensate everybody we need to on the, on everybody's time for that.
Everything will be in there for the teacher, that teacher logs in, their courses are there, just like you say in IML. Their students are already in those courses, and the assignments and the tests are there, and the teacher has the choice of what they want the kids to, the students to say. Pretty nice. Just pray IML import Trix. Chromebooks to IML import. But Jill has literally worked since Friday trying to get this and get the scripts from Schools PLP so we could, you know, import IML, and we just received all that an hour ago.
And I do know. And I do know, I spoke with Mr. Colgrove, the Atala City Schools, and we're using the exact same, the exact same setup as, as we will on this. So I'd ask for your approval, Schools PLP, the learning management system. And that, that fund source will be some of our CARES Act money that, that we've got.
All right, we have a motion to approve Mr. Sheridan, and Mr. Payne has seconded the motion for item O, the purchase of Schools PLP Learning Management Systems. All in favor of approving this, would you say aye? Any opposed? Motion is unanimous.
Thank you. Okay, next item is, I have to purchase or recommend that we purchase external access points from Information Transport Solution. All right, we bought wireless access points throughout our buildings, I think at our February meeting. All right, when we dismissed school in the spring, we offered internet service to some of our families in parking lots and all that because we moved access points near the parking lots. These will be on the outside of buildings, so if we have somebody that needs internet access, they can drive up school, they can get our, that we're going to. This is in anticipation, you know, of people that need that internet service. And, and, you know, if we have to, for some reason, dismiss school, and we have someone without internet service at home, because we've got areas of this county you cannot reach with internet service. So this is just one more resource. Now, these monies will be CARES Act monies as well. It's about $31,000 is what these will be. And the balance of this, we still got Susan, how much, about $80,000 in this layoff? And some of this can be used for Wi-Fi on school buses as well. But what I'm hearing statewide is not even many people are putting Wi-Fi on school buses because, again, there's areas that we park school buses at night. Doesn't matter if we got Wi-Fi on those buses, they're in an area that's not served by high-speed internet. So we may put some Wi-Fi on buses, Mr. Edwards and I have talked briefly about that, but this is an acceptable expenditure. And talking with the State Department, a lot of systems are using these external access points on their buildings to give more coverage out. And again, I'll ask Ms. Gray to add to anything since she's dealt with this.
These will be way up there too, so they're a little sturdier access points to put up in the parking lot. But just like she says, it gives more kids access. We had to move several access points inside the school buildings and pull them to windows to give those parking lot access in the spring. The tech did that at several locations. So now with school starting, we've moved those back to those areas where they belong for connection outside the building. So some schools have lost that outside connection, the parking lot's just too far, or those block walls, it's just not coming through. So these will help provide that in the parking lot, not just if we go with med, but just, you know, if a kid is working online for whatever reason, if they're accessing School PLP, you know, after hours and working on something or Google Classroom, whatever that teacher may be using, and they need to come to the parking lot. You know, and the best Wi-Fi, that is something we can do, but in two years, when this money is gone, we will continue to have that monthly charge per Wi-Fi device that is on our bus. So that's just something I thought, where these external APs will be permanent. They'll be a part of our fiber, you know, connected to our fiber, a part of our system, and they are for the life of the AP.
And the Wi-Fi on buses, and we may do that in some limited capacity, but the bigger issue we've got in this county is internet access in certain areas of the county and lack of high-speed internet. And I've, I've spoken with several, Mr. Ramsey, I think we've even talked about that. And I've talked with some of our delegations. That's, that's a larger issue that we, we got to address, and I'm, I'm willing to address because there's, I've had people call me that they, money's not an issue, they don't have high-speed internet. And so we've got to address that as a county, and I think, you know, we'll do that over time, so.
Does that, do anything to diminish the connectivity speed inside the building?
So I see, does that diminish any of our speeds?
We upgraded our fiber back like the first of the year in January to give our speed, to give us more speed. So we should be good. And with the new access points with E-Rate, these are the same type of access points and brands, but just external links, and all of them will run on the same program together. Where our problem right now is we've got various types of access points, and the tech are having to run them off different programs. So once we get all this going, E-Rate's just been like everything else delayed because of the pandemic. And hopefully all that will go through soon, and we'll have those new APs also. But ITS will also install these external, that's part of the, they'll install and do everything for us.
And our, and our internet service is through IT. They've, they've got, they're a vendor on our internet service that we actually buy from that pull it down to us. So I'd ask for your approval of the access points, please.
All right, we have a motion for item P to approve the purchase of these external access points. And we have a second from Mr. Golden. Any more discussion or questions? If not, all in favor of item P, would you say aye, please? Any opposed? All right, motion carries unanimously for item P.
And I just want to say, I forgot on several of our folks here today, there's not been a dull moment in this central office all summer long. Because I'm telling you, these folks have, you know, I've done most of the worry and they've done the work. So anyway, they've been, they've been really good. Next, our, our personnel, item Q, I'd ask for your approval of those, page two, items one through 18. Page three, items 19 through 36. Page four, items 37 and 38. There's two reassignments there that don't necessarily require board approval, but those are there for your information, information points. And then also item five, which is there as well, so on the next page, or the next item on page five, rather, ask for your approval on those. Also, I would like to note, our athletic supplements, extrudery supplements are not on here. I have not received those from all the schools, so we'll get those at a future meeting. I didn't want to introduce those at different times. We'll do those all at once at a, at upcoming meeting.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the personnel in our packet, item Q? All right, Mr. Sheridan has made the motion to approve item Q, and Mr. Payne has seconded that motion. Are there any questions or any discussion on our personnel packet? If not, all in favor of approving the personnel as printed in our packet, would you say aye? Anyone opposed? Motion carries 100%.
Thank you. We do have an executive session that I'm going to ask that we go into here in just a moment. We possibly may have action coming back out of that, I won't say that we will not, but we do need to discuss an item. But before we do that, I will take a minute, for those of you that don't want to hang around, I'm going to recognize Ms. Cook, I think she's got someone she wants to introduce. We, we were funded the other day, we received notification of our grant. Alabama Legislature this, this year made a certain amount of money available for mental health coordinators in school systems. We thought each school system would get one, however, it was a competitive grant process, and so we had to wait on that grant to come back in. And we were awarded a grant for a mental health coordinator. Tanya has been the counselor at Hoax Bluff Elementary for a long time, how many years, Tanya? Okay, for quite a while, and it's a huge loss for Hoax Bluff Elementary, but she'll be working. And she has various mental health certifications and will be very good with her students and that. So glad to have her coming aboard in this role, and she'll be an asset because we deal with so many issues in school that are mental health issues, and she's going to, she's going to help us with that. Okay, so thank you for that. Mr. Whittingham, we got anybody else, or? I think we do, okay. Will we get a motion? Y'all want to say anything, or?
For members, do you want to make some comments before we go into executive session? Because some folks may want to leave, so we'll give you that opportunity now. If not.
I'd like to thank all of you for working so hard to get to Goodwill, appreciate you very much. I like Slime, Slime, Bang, and Daniel. I know you're going to be very missed out of help.
I'm here, we appreciate you. No, there's a lot of things that don't have answers to, but we just got to tell us, we need staff to come up with the best plan and it's true that we'll take into consideration each of our students, and we thank y'all for that.
Same for me, I appreciate all the hard work. Appreciate Mr. Randy being here tonight, always good to see our community leaders that are here to work with us and help us get things that we need for their school system. Thank you.
I'll look on that, Tim, appreciate all you do at the county and all the work. Great partner with us in education, appreciate that. Congratulations on your job. Excited about the challenges that are in front of us. Got to be playing a good team. Our prayer needed for our IT department.
I think so too.
Commissioner Ramsey, did you want to speak? Go ahead.
I would just like to thank y'all for the job you've been doing and the crazy news that we're in. I know y'all done a lot of heartfelt, hard searching, one is the right answer. And Mr. Randy was at our, our meeting this morning, and the situation in, in City of Gadsden is different from the situation in the county. And part of what I mentioned earlier was the access to the internet and broadband. It's just a completely different situation. And I've longed for what you're doing here, it sounded like a put your feet in the water, see how this is going to go kind of thing, and they expect you to step back out if you need to. And just, it's all you can do. And I appreciate the time and respect, we're just playing together. I appreciate all the hard work you've done over the summer to get, get everybody ready. And all we can do at this point is just pray and be wise. And those are the things that we ask, is, is, is more watchovers, give us wisdom and, and move on. So I just pray for a great school year, I appreciate all the things we're here, all the educators in the county and cities. It's a great task that you're undertaking, and I just applaud you for it, I appreciate you letting me your time.
And what I'd like to say, Commissioner Ramsey, I've spoken with both he and Commissioner Grant today, and they are assisting with helping us with the one more at West End High School. And actually, I think the more made it out there today, so they, so the grass will be good to cut.
Well, they're cutting 48.
Yeah.
And of course, we have an abundance of rain this year, so they have been behind every day of the whole summer. They're just laying down all this type of emergency stuff. That's what we do, we just try to step up in the emergency, we're obviously, like y'all, don't have enough money to do everything we want to do. But occasionally, when it just hits the wall, you've got to step up and do what you can. I just think you're going to have to.
Did you want to give an update on SINTAS? Has SINTAS been able to, to take care of all of us?
Yeah, I'll defer to Mr. Whittingham. I know they've been to most all, most if not all of our schools, so Chris gives enough they don't send us.
We need to write the end of the completion of the hand side. I know the wind got up here though, so I gotta, everybody say this relax. Yeah, I've been, our PPEs are coming in this week. Mask gloves, monitors, that's you, it's all that, deliver everybody in the week. We'll probably try and plus another big order with, you know, maybe we're having enough. So yeah, they, they've been great, they put on the school buses, Jeremy took me a picture today. Really neat how they mount them, you know, they put them in like on the satellite, but see you cross with the driver up into the, you know, into the bus. So it's not where it's going to get knocked over and knocked off, but it's accessible to the kids. Try to keep the purpose of safety before they keep that six foot of, of space between them. So really want to get 44 students that are 48 if that's possible. That's why the stagger start really going to help, partly our numbers one day and getting to the next, the next, the next, is it, we can have right out of that.
We're doing custodial training next week, bringing all our custodians in. At the day, we're going to make a medical. At the day, we're going to, uh, we're going to let the parties talk to them about how much we appreciate them. And how important their role is going to be. Their role, you know, just claiming this, uh, safety. So, uh, Centos will put all that training, that will all people, uh, that will be all of our supplies.
Also, Chris mentioned, uh, go ahead.
Will, uh, will all the teachers have?
Shields.
Shields. Uh, well, I think we've ordered enough for all our elementary H, uh, teachers. Because they consider them out. But if a teacher says, I need one, we'll get them. That's what I was saying.
We've got six hundred, but we're going to have to order more. It's a face shields, you know, things.
Oh, okay. I was talking about like the.
Yeah.
On the table or whatever. No, we, we got those for all the schools, the front desk nurses. We don't have place to place contact. Um, we, we didn't order from teachers, but again, we've got a lot of leftover supplies. So, somebody could come and I need one, but whatever. Let me try again. We'll do all around here.
We ordered those table dividers, which are mainly for, you know, tables, science labs, uh, computer labs, et cetera. And we bought fifteen hundred of those. We're already out of those. We got to order, place another order for those. But those are on bid, so we'll just keep getting those as we, as we know we need them.
Again, the school, we said that.
They're, they're coming in.
They're coming this week, but the ones we've ordered already been spoken for. So, we got to order, do a second order.
Along with all our signage, um, it's just, it's been a lot, you know. All that should be out. What we give you here, we should have everything we need. We've got a hundred rechargeable fenders too. That's, uh, especially the teachers or bus drivers. They can get it done in a hurry and it's like, so our custodians got those.
Yeah.
We're going to play in fog and sanitize.
And, uh, Chris mentioned medical. We had a meeting, several of our folks here at the office. Uh, we met last week with Dr. Claire Yothar of Gadsden Pediatrics. Uh, also, Dr. Cynthia Hill of Gadsden Pediatrics. And Dr. Evan Johnson of Sardis Medical Clinic. They all met with us. We've got some great ideas because, you know, obviously, they're seeing kids, they're seeing adults. And so, we've got some great ideas. And, um, that's sort of, that's our, I guess, quasi medical advisory team that we're using. And, uh, I actually spoke with Dr. Yothar last night. And she, and, uh, they're willing to come speak to our custodians as well, uh, next week. And, uh, also, Dr. Yothar is coming up with a letter that, uh, to all our employees, talking about some things. And I have not seen that letter. She's going to email me a copy of that, you know, from a physician standpoint on some things. So, we'll, I'll look at that and possibly get that out to our employees. So, we've had a lot of help from a lot of people, uh, in the, in the community on a variety of things. So, uh, and obviously, Ms. Parker and I talked lunch. She's going to look a lot different as well. And she's working through challenges with the lunchroom, but, uh. And breakfast. Yeah. So, anyway, that's all I have from that standpoint. So, I'll, um, have a motion that, uh, I seek a motion. We go into executive session, we're threatened or pending, uh, legal action. And, uh, I'll ask Ms. Turnbach to certify that makes the exemption of the Alabama Open Meetings Act. Now, like I said, we may or may not have action coming back out.
I'll sort of tie that. Just in case it will be.
And, uh, be the, all the board members here will be in attendance. And then Mr. Winningham, I'll ask him to be in there as well. And so.
All right, Mr. Sheridan has made that motion. Mr. Hansman has seconded that motion. All in favor of going into our executive session, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion is unanimous.
Okay, we're back broadcasting.
I would like to make a motion to go back into regular session.
Okay, Danny makes the motion, regular session.
All right, Mr. Golden has made a motion and Mr. Sheridan has seconded the motion for us to go back into our regular session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion carries and we have a motion to adjourn.
Coach, but I have to do it fast.
Thank you.